Okay. It's nine o'clock. We'll begin the county board meeting with the flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody this morning to the county board. Get my stuff in order. Roll call, Beth?
Sure. Commissioner Benoit?
Here.
Commissioner Heinon?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Here.
Thank you.
Amender approve the agenda.
We have no changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. County board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The county board observes the Roberts Rule of Order for its meetings. So please obtain the board's chair consent before addressing the county board. Please come. Public comments are generally reserved for open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn your phones to, your cell phones to off or vibrate. Thank you. Open forum, is anybody back there? No, thank you. Consent agenda, we have items one through six. What's your wishes?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull six, please.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to approve consent agenda items one through five.
I'll amend my second for the same.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve items one through five with pulling for consideration number six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Commissioner Benoit?
Just a correction on, on there, it says June 16th, thirty comma twenty twenty-five. So it just needs a correction for the correction date. Okay?
Motion to approve consent agenda items one through five.
I'll amend my second for the same.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve items one through five with pulling for consideration number six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Commissioner Benoit?
Just a correction on, on there, it says June 16th, thirty comma twenty twenty-five. So it just needs a correction for the correction date. Okay? I'll make a motion to approve consent six with the correction.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda item number six. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Sing. Carry. Troy Heck, the sheriff.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning. Morning.
Today, it's my honor to stand before you and present a citizen's life-saving award to Jared Bentru. One of the greatest parts about being in this area and in central Minnesota is that we truly do take care of each other. And when there's a need, we strive to fill it. Thankfully, we had somebody who was willing to go above and beyond that in a particular incident and, and save the life of Sharon Ricks. I see that he's joining us via the link. That's excellent. So to give you some background on what happened here and what brought us to this moment today. On January 13th of this year, Jared Bentru had the misfortune of leaving the road away with his vehicle. It's something that happens to many of us and it, it makes for a bad day. He summoned the services of All Care Toing to help him get his vehicle back on the road, which happened pretty frequently that day, if I remember right. The road conditions were pretty poor. Sharon Ricks, in his work for, for All Care Toing, showed up and hooked onto the vehicle, pulled him out of the ditch, got him back up on the shoulder of the road, was finishing up his work, getting ready to, to send Jared and on his way. And I'm sure go on to the next call that was waiting when there was a vehicle on North Benton Drive where all this took place that was coming southbound. As the vehicle was coming southbound, it lost control and it slid into the side of the truck that Sharon was operating while he was outside the truck trying to tend to the controls. As a result of this crash, Sharon was gravely injured. He had, had massive injuries to his legs and he was, he was in some tough shape at that moment. Thankfully, Jared was there and he put into, he put in practice his training and his equipment that he had with. Jared is a Bethel University student and he's also a member of the University of Minnesota ROTC program. During his ROTC training, he received training in, in combat medic skills. He had with him some tourniquets and he put those skills and those tourniquets into practice because at, at that moment, in the seconds following the crash, Sharon was, was basically bleeding out from the arteries in his legs. Recognizing this, as I said, Jared put into practice the, his skills and his equipment and stopped that massive bleeding that surely would have taken his life. The, both the deputies that were on scene and the doctors that subsequently treated Sharon confirmed that without the application of those tourniquets, it would have been, it would have been a very difficult outcome for Sharon. So we're here this morning to say thank you to Jared for his efforts and recognize him going above and beyond what, what is, what is asked of people in their normal everyday lives and for preserving the life of Sharon so that down the, down the line, Jared and Sharon and, and their families can look back on this day and, and know that it was, while a turning point in their life, it wasn't the end of the story, it was just the next chapter. So if you join me in saying thank you to Jared, if you want to come on up, Jared?
Thank you.
Do you have anything you wanted to say?
I, I know.
So there's your life-saving award. Sharon, I see again, you've joined us. I don't know if there's anything you wanted to say?
Just grateful for Jared and his family, especially Jared for his quick reaction and saving my life on that day. Thanks a lot, buddy.
And we're all very grateful to see that you're recovering and we, we wish you well.
So Troy, could you jock him up for a front for a photo?
Absolutely.
Please? Thank you.
You're gonna cover the board chair, because he doesn't matter.
Here we go.
We're gonna move. Pop, you guys go this way.
Okay. Thanks, Derek.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I'll get mine. It is.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Thanks, Matt.
So Jared, question for you.
Yeah.
What, I mean, Sharon, I mean, what a difficult day. I mean, what, what, what did you guys think right away when I, I mean?
Oh, man, I mean, right when it happened, it was kind of surreal. Dad was there too, so just kind of checked on him first because he actually went flying into the ditch to avoid the cars and stuff like that. But then after found out he was okay, we both kind of ran to Sharon, drug him off the road. He called 911 and that's when I saw that he was bleeding from both legs and the two tourniquets I had on each, each leg. So it was a pretty surreal moment, wasn't expecting it. I thought the, me going in the ditch was the craziest part of the morning.
Thank you. Sharon, we, we do appreciate you joining us too. I can't imagine what you're going through.
It's a day-by-day kind of deal, but because of the quick thinking of Jared and I'm still here and I'm grateful for that and that's the main thing.
Yep.
Like Jared said, it was surreal for dad to happen. The worst thing was maybe just having to pull him out of the ditch and then this happened, but you know, better me than a pedestrian or bicycles that's usually riding up and down Ben Drack or they wouldn't have made it.
Well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yes, thank.
These are your parents here, I'm a very proud son.
Yeah. Very proud father and mother, yep, thank you. Done a great job raising them.
One more round of applause for you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Good luck to you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. There are always good stories, Dan.
Yeah.
Difficult, but good. I remember we were on ice one time and we were on multiple calls on Highway 10 with the fire department. And we're, we're directing traffic behind and the semi come up and pretty soon is sideways. Coming right at us and, and me and Millbauer, we ended up running for the ditch and the semi pulled it out and it was like, but it was horrible. I mean, it could have been very bad.
Yuck.
So.
Okay. Monty. Does it, you have the republic hearing announcement?
Yes, I do.
Typically, yeah? The next, next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider the proposed changes for the Benton County fee schedule. Before the public hearing, we will first hear from county staff report.
All right. Well, Mr. Chair, of course, we have a new shelter at Bend River Park and our, the park commission wishes to make it available via reservation. Of course, if it's, the shelter isn't getting used, folks can use it, first come, first served. But if they'd like to reserve it and have it exclusively theirs for a day or so, they, they can. And it would be available through our online reservation system. So the park commission at its last meeting took a look at some comparative data. There wasn't really a lot to go from, from our area counties in terms of comparable shelters and, and some don't charge at all. So really wasn't a lot to go on. They, they looked at what we currently charge for our shelters. As you know, we have two shelters at Bend, Benton Beach. The small shelter, large shelter, the smallest fifty, the large shelter is seventy-five. Ultimately, the park commission settled on a hundred dollars per day as the rental rate for the, the new shelter at Bend in the River. They did feel it was appropriate to offer nonprofit groups a discount of twenty-five dollars, so seventy-five dollars for a nonprofit group if they wish to reserve the shelter. They also added, like we do with the Bend, Benton Beach shelters, a thirty-dollar security deposit. So if you leave it kind of messy, we'll keep your thirty bucks. So. And that is, so as you know, the shelter is all done and we'll start making it available for reservations here quite soon.
Okay, Mr. Chair, quick question for Monty. Just logistic-wise, you said first come, first serve, or you could reserve it.
Yes.
So if I show up that day thinking I'm going to use it, there's going to be a notice or something that says?
There is a, there is a kiosk front and center, right there by the shelter, and we're going to post in very vivid letters whether it's reserved that day. Absolutely. So will I have to change that as reservations come in? Yes, we will make sure folks know.
Do you got to personally go out and do that?
I will personally go out and, yes.
No, I. They asking a serious question this time.
I can't tell what.
I know. I get it.
Yes, so to be, to answer your question seriously. So of course, we have summer staff out of Benton Beach and they've got a computer and a printer. And they'll have something they can print out and they'll run it over to Benton, Bend River each, possibly almost daily because they've got to go there to clean the bathrooms anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. No, I was, I was thinking I would look into some, almost like cellular type.
I wish.
Application where you could automatically update it.
I wish. You know, I think that probably it's something we should explore in the future if there's some avenue for electronic signage. The only issue there is it gives someone really something expensive to vandalize. It, a piece of paper is pretty cheap, so, yeah.
Just those enclosures for the, for the little monitors are probably about four grand.
For weatherproof.
Okay, so the agenda, the applicant is actually the county. And he addressed the county board. We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the county board on this agenda item? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and your address. Or what? Or online, yes. We don't have that in here. Does anybody want to address online? I see a none. Final call for anyone wanting to address the county board online, as we have nobody in the county board right now. Are there any emails, letters, or communications to be read? Has the department received any comments or concerns from state agencies, cities, townships on this agenda? Being there was none, it didn't affect the town, there was no effect from the township at that point. The county board will now have time for questions of staff and discussions. As a reminder to the audience, the public hearing is now closed. Are there any questions, comments from board members taken on this item?
The only question I had was what Jared brought up earlier about electronic instead of paper.
I, I think they discussed that early on the planning about doing something out there, but you know, it just makes it much more acceptable to vandalism and somebody's taking stuff or whatever, so.
But you know, what you could do is, so I've been thinking about this. You could put, you know, cellular modem up like in the, in, in, like a little box inside the shelter and then have that connect to cameras as well as.
Hey, that ain't a bad idea.
Yeah.
That way you.
I bet there's fiber going right by.
There is, well, but the thing is.
There is, I'm sure.
There is, but, but if you do it that way, now you got a monthly connection fee for the local telco.
Sure.
Unless maybe the local telco being Benton telephone.
Maybe they'd waive it.
Maybe they would donate that part.
What I'm guessing is probably is people start to use your shelter Republican here requesting Wi-Fi.
Wi-Fi. Probably.
Well, that's the next thing.
Do that, we could offer a little bit of Wi-Fi. It, it's going to be a modem-based, but cellular, but.
I remember this service at Benton Beach is really pretty affordable.
Yeah, it wasn't.
It's all the hardware.
Mm-hmm.
You get going, but the service is cheap.
You put a hotspot out there, it's twenty bucks a month. So.
And I think, as long as we're on this, on the Bend River Park, we're probably going to have some kind of a ceremony this spring.
You bet. Yeah, we'll have some kind of nice open house, we'll grill some burgers and brats and, and celebrate the completion of the project. You bet.
I mean, you know, this was about a million bucks we stuck into this and that.
Yeah.
I mean, the counties received a lot of money from legacy and stuff like that for this park.
Turned out great.
And it turned out really, really nice.
I'll, I'll look into that. Because, I mean, honestly, you can get some pretty affordable cameras out there and you could have. It's not like you're watching what's going on.
It's just if you got something you could review. Yeah. We want to see when Monty's there every other day.
Yeah.
He goes there a lot from what he tells park board.
It is, it is a very nice property.
It is. You know.
Should be proud of it.
I, I think I said it before is when I first got on the county board, I was like, this is a money pit. Why don't we just sell the land and, you know, and you learn that you can't. But as we move through BEP and some of the other stuff, it's an asset that companies look at when they're, they're expanding or coming to the central Minnesota area.
Well, one thing we point out, the park commission is Great River Green has brought to bear about three hundred thousand dollars of grants so far to do invasive species removal and prairie management. Wow, at very little cost to us.
Right.
Very little cost. So they really kind of take and bend the river under its wing and want to keep working to that part. Right, to manage the bases and so on.
Yeah, I, I think the park board has had a lot of resources or people they know or something to get some of this stuff done that's been really good.
Yeah.
So. Any other discussion? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt a revised Benton County fee schedule to add new fees for shelter rental at Bend in the River Park.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion, anybody wants? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Now we'll address the county board and we'll move on to public health. Community Health Board or the Health Board?
Thank you. Really? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our call to order, the Benton County Community Health Board. Is Jaclyn online or is Jaclyn coming?
I believe Jaclyn's out.
She, she was here today.
She was here this morning.
Maybe she's on from late.
We're way earlier than we usually are, so.
Yeah.
We could play the Jeopardy music. Did you see they're moving to streaming now?
If he watches Jeopardy.
Jeopardy is in one of their games, or in the like streaming versus actual TV. I've seen that. They're moving to streaming.
Really?
Yep. That was Michelle.
Yeah. Okay. Well, Mr. Chair, we could probably turn it back over if you wanted to do the ditch.
Or the commissioner updates or?
Commissioner updates or something.
Chris isn't here either.
Chris ain't here neither, so.
Where is everybody this morning? Isn't there a board meeting?
We are way early.
We are way early, yeah.
We could do commissioner meeting updates.
Sure. I can.
Go ahead.
I only had one. And I was at the CAT, what do you call that? BCAT?
BCAT.
BCAT, that's it. I was out for medical, sorry. That's all I had.
I had a home run leadership.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm sorry, did you recess, did you recess county board and go, um, community health board and go back to county board? Okay, make sure we did that.
Tell Jaclyn's here.
Okay.
I had home run leadership training in St. Cloud. I thought it was absolutely phenomenal. I had TRICAP and a BCAT meeting and I did the seven W regional meeting for Scott. I did AMC legislation conference and then our cow yesterday.
Thank you for filling in for seven W, by the way. Appreciate that.
Oh, yeah, I was at the cow too yesterday.
Yep. All right, we had the cow, we had the legislative conference. We, I did my first policy board meeting. That went good. We had our AMC board meeting. I got put on the finance committee, so on AMC. So another meeting. Other than that, uh, I'm trying to think what else we had. I think, I think that's about it. Lot, lot down at the legislative conference, as we know.
All right, February 18th, had a virtual meeting with Judicial Ditch 1A from Mille Lacs County, some issues going on there. Of course, the legislative conference, it's been talked about. Also, Commissioner Pop and I and Commissioner Benoit sat in on the MRC the night before. So that was good information. Filled in for Commissioner Pop on the BEP Executive Board the following Thursday. Had a care board meeting that evening. And of course, we had our cow with GLT yesterday, so that was what I had. Okay. We had the library right after our last board meeting. I guess I need to ask this board, so I've been, been hit by a few commissioners that they believe that the chair of the library board should be a county commissioner from one of the, one of the counties. This is the first time in my memory that we were not. And the vice chair is not part of the.
Neither one of them.
Neither one of them are. And, you know, Morrison County Commissioner, Todd County Commissioner, and then Stearns County Commissioner just said, well, you need to change that, but I don't know how to change it because we're virtually, our county commissioners that are, are on there right now are Tim Denny and he said he can't do it. The one from Stearns County, as you know, has not been there. And then we got a different one and it's still not showing up. And so what do you, what do yous think, so I can go back?
Is there something in their bylaws that talks about it?
They don't, Karen's going to look, but they, you know, they just said that it has, they can't remember going back way before I was there that it wasn't. I guess, my opinion, start with the bylaws and.
Right.
Might need to update them to include elected official as a chair.
Most likely, that's probably in the joint powers agreement. And the, the, the other side of that coin is if you make a change, that means every member county has to. Most likely, that's probably in the joint powers agreement and the, the, the other side of that coin is if you make a change, that means every member county has to approve it, right? Yeah.
When I look at what the amount we spend on library board across, we gotta have an elected official as the chair.
Yeah.
And then we do have to have an elected official as the.
Think of it this way, they have signing authority.
Right, yeah.
So I think the vice needs to be elected also.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, you know, and it's, I don't know, I don't think staff really feels that it makes any difference, but I think it does.
Oh, I, i- if it's a joint powers board, yes, it's gotta be by commissioners, elected officials.
And you know, we've had a lot of, uh, we've had a lot of input from the public on this, you know, ban the book stuff. And so I tried to, to let it up to the chair that, because we get the, you get, we give them two minutes for six people. And so, but the same six, it's on a first come, first served basis, so the same people are coming every time and signing up. And I wanted to change it to have that it's at the board's discretion, so, so and so has been here three months, we don't need to hear from her again or him again. And, um.
That's probably something your board's gonna have to decide.
And they wouldn't do it.
Uh, if it's joint power board, it's probably in the agreement anyway.
Okay. So, um, that's been, and then we elected Tina Dietrich from Wright County as the finance chair. I just didn't feel that, I've done it for a number of years and we need to move on because, you know, I'm not gonna be there very much longer, so, um, we need to move on and make, get somebody in there and, and then it's all the commissioners, the six commissioners plus the chair of the board. So then we're limited to this person that's the chair now is from Sherburne County, so she has to be on the finance committee, otherwise we could pick somebody that had financial background to be on the too, so. We had that one, then we, the township one, which was pretty good. Then we did the Mississippi River Sartell, got off to its first meeting.
How was that?
It actually was really good. Um, I think we've been, you know, we've been through it, I think the St. Cloud one really helped set the, the pace of what we're gonna do, hopefully I won't do that. Um, a lot smaller group, because we only have three, three counties, um, one and the tribe. And so, um, not a lot of experience on there that have done it before, so. Um, we elected our chair, vice chair, and, uh, secretary, and Benton County's got both the chair and the vice chair in Chuck Rau and myself.
Oh, okay.
So I think we'll be able to move on on this pretty fast and get it done. Um, they got more money than, than in the past, they got two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to do the plan. And I think we had two hundred and twenty thousand on the other one. So, and they get, uh, one point six million for two years when we get it done. So they got a little more money, I don't know, it's, um, you know, we're moving north and it's Mississippi.
Friends of Bowser.
Yeah, friends of Bowser, yeah, maybe, so. Um, that was all, then I had the ledge conference and you, thanks for doing the BEP. And then we had, uh, the sub ditch committee.
Yeah, that's the other thing I missed, that was last Friday, that was good.
That was good, we got things, you know. Where we need to go and not at your treasurer's office is gonna handle some things and how we're gonna handle some things, so. And that was all that I had. I have a couple more, I forgot about the futures, that's why I wasn't at B cap, I had the futures for AMC. That was actually, I'm glad you talked me into staying on that, because I was gonna decline it, but, uh, uh, it was very, it was, it was a really good two days.
As you can see, I'm always behind him poking him.
So there's that, and then, uh, I do believe, um, as Commissioner Hyden and, and, uh, probably understands it, I think we got real legs on that County Road, uh, one from twenty-nine to three. Uh, I would be highly surprised if there's a bonding bill that isn't in there or on the, on the federal side, on the, on the raise side. Yeah, I, I really believe that that section's gonna be put in on one of them this year.
Well, then we should probably look at, Steve talked about that, that, um, they're all for the earmarks again.
Yep.
And the COBisher's got money now again, so.
Yep, well, and, and all, and all of those know about this, about the, uh, the whole road all the way from, from twenty-nine to twenty-three. And I think the, the raise grant, we're still carrying the, the twenty-four million, twenty-three?
Twenty-one million.
Twenty-one, okay, but, uh, uh, we broke it up into segments, but I, one of the things that APO we're gonna work on is actually going to them right before they start reviewing the raise grants, which is probably in the next few weeks, and have our, um, have, have all representatives reach out to these people and, and have them understand what just happened with the school district, what's going on with the park, and the road count currently where it's at. Uh, uh, not to mention the, the sidewalk that's just getting put in, which is gonna help our grant, so.
We have an agreement with that sidewalk yet?
Yep.
You know, and this is all gonna. And all these buildings and everything is gonna be happening in the next two years, so. We have limited time.
Yep. So that's all I have, thank you.
Alright. Everybody got their chance, right?
Yep.
Okay, we'll recess the county board again and go to public health.
Well, we're going to open the Benton County Community Health Board again. Uh, Jaclyn, approve or amend the agenda? I see you had a handout for us.
Yeah, one addition that came in hot off the press this morning, um, which would be an approval of acceptance of Minnesota Public Health State Infrastructure Funding.
Okay, we'll do that as three D then. Anything else to add?
No.
Okay, motion please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for a discussion. If not, I'll call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, consent agenda item one.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Jaclyn, consider resolution to accept funds from Medica County Invitation Funding to Benton County Public Health.
Yes, thank you. So Benton County Public Health, we had previously applied to the Medica County Invitation Funding opportunity back in August of twenty twenty-four. Our public health staff, Kayla and Mariah are here with us today. Um, it, while they were having conversations with Medica about some additional needs for resources, Medica um, decided to grant us some additional funding, so, to cover the cost of some additional activities, so. We're just here today to ask for acceptance of the additional three thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, and I'll have Kayla or Mariah come on up and give a staff report on some of the things they've been working on with this even small amount of money, the amazing things they've been able to do.
Thank you for that, cause that was, that was my next question. What are you gonna use it for?
I can explain that. Uh, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, yeah, so we, um, have the County Innovations Fund, we've actually been able to get this a couple of times now. Um, the first time we were awarded in twenty twenty-three, um, and we used it to create hygiene kits. Um, so we were able to use, I think it was about five thousand dollars we received, um, and we were able to purchase items to create over nine hundred and fifty kits that we distributed to different partners around the community. Um, so it was a really good experience, our whole public health team got together and spent a good chunk of a morning packing and we distributed them to, um, I think we did reach up Head Start, area schools, um, and just different programs like that. Um, and we had really good feedback too, when we went to deliver it, um, a lot of the staff that I talked to, they said that, you know, a lot of the times they use their own money to buy these kinds of supplies, um, because kids need them, they come to school, they don't have access to it, and it's stuff that they need, so, um, we were able to help a lot of kids that way. Um, and then like Jaclyn was saying, we did apply for it in twenty twenty-four as well. Um, we had two initiatives that we were planning on working on with those grant funds. Um, we've, through conversations with, um, we do like a tri-county group with Sanchar Care, we meet just to kind of talk about different projects. Um, a need was identified to, um, hold some sort of conversation around the MMR vaccine within the Sumali community, um, because that has historically been very low. Um, so one of the plans we were going to work on, um, was, uh, working with Hoyo Hour, which is an organization out of St. Cloud that kind of already does a lot of this work, they have conversations with moms, um, just about, you know, health like initiatives, um, and that kind of stuff, um, so we're gonna work with them and hold a series of conversations, just kind of talking about child development, um, I don't know, signs of autism, what causes autism, and then hopefully from there move into the MMR vaccine um, importance, and then, um, with any of those additional funds, we were hoping to also do some sort of dental events around the county, um, we're looking at potentially partnering with Children's Dental Services just to offer some, um, cleaning dates and restorative dates as well, just because we know that that is also a really big need in the county. Um, and then as we've kind of been working through these initiatives, we kind of learned that, um, you know, these conversations are very important and, um, we went to Medica just to ask for some additional funds, just to kind of cover some more of those costs that come from having like a speaker come up, have different partners present at these and, um, as well, so they were able to award us some additional funds for this year. Yeah, I don't know, do you want to touch on the?
Do you want to talk a little bit about Children's Dental Services and how they get reimbursement, so it's really.
Yes, yeah, so Children's Dental Services is a nonprofit dental clinic, um, they have like a home base in Minneapolis, but they also um, are able to do like mobile type services, so they're able to essentially set up anywhere that they have access to water and a room. Um, and they can come offer different types of services, so they'll do like cleaning dates, where they'll just, you know, do basic cleanings, but then they also offer restorative days as well, where they'll come and, um, you know, do extractions, that kind of stuff, um, so it's, I mean, it's really a great partnership, um. You know, there's such a big need that, you know, it's a good way to fill, you know, some of this gap, but it's, you know, obviously not like a permanent solution, so. Yeah, they'll be, I think, a really good partner with us and, yeah, we're excited to see where that goes.
Mr. Chair, um, so a- any qualifications for these children to come in for dental services, or they just show up?
They can just show up, um, they accept all types of insurances, um, so it's great for a lot of our clients that are on medical assistance. And then if you don't have insurance, they also offer a sliding scale fee, so then that way families can pay what they're able to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Board, what would you like to do with this?
I'll make a motion to. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next one, Jaclyn.
Yeah, and thank you for your approval of that resolution, it's, it's always amazing to me to see how much we can do with such a small amount of dollars, so it's really cool to see that pan out. Um, so the next item is for us, um, for the Community Health Board to approve Benton County Public Health Staff to explore an additional opportunity, to submit an application to receive some additional funding um, from Medica, which is through their early childhood health grant. Um, and Kayla is, is happy to speak a little bit to that as well, as far as what our plans would be for that. But very similarly, um, our primary, you know, goal with this additional grant opportunity and request for funding would be to explore other avenues that we can take to help extend those dental accesses and dental services, so. Um, we are allowed to ask for a maximum of a hundred thousand dollars, and so our goal would be to explore it, um, determine budget wise, what, what type of funding or amount of funding we may need for the projects that we're thinking of, and then submit an application if we have Community Health Board approval to do so.
Talk a little bit about it?
Yeah.
Please do.
Um, I don't think there's a lot to say at this point in time, um, based, or off of like what Jaclyn said, um, but yeah, we're hoping to just apply for this, um, early childhood grant. Um, one of the exciting things is that they do, um, they focus on rural communities, which is one of their priority areas, so that's, you know, great for us, and then dental access was also one of their project areas that they're looking at as well, so hopefully if we're accepted to, um, receive these funds, we can kind of use that to still continue our work to expand dental access in the area. Um, I think applications are open until the, um, April fourth, so we'll try to get an application in here soon, and then we'll receive notice in late June. Um, whether or not we're able to, you know, move forward in this process, and then, um, final notice if we are actually approved comes late September, so it's kind of a long process, but hopefully we can get through this.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move for approval of submitting the application, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, any further discussion on that one?
Yeah, where does Medica get their money, or where is this coming from?
Medica?
Yeah.
Yeah, Medica is one of the health plans, so, yeah, yeah, health insurance company.
Funds from them come from?
Us.
I believe it probably comes from their reimburse, from their fees and reimbursements and, um, I'd have to ask more details on that, I don't know where they come up with the funding source for their funding, but I'm assuming it's probably appropriated in their budgets, um.
That they put so much back into the community or something like that?
Yeah, I know at the end of the year, oftentimes they've, they've announced that they've had additional funding award opportunities, um, and they just designate to give back to community. Um, a lot of the health plans have to work in conjunction on a community health improvement plan, similar to public health departments, and so a lot of ways that they do that is by offering up funds that go back into community. Um, but I can get some more clarification on that, and if we're awarded the funds, I can come back with some more information about how they.
How they obtain their funds.
Similar to the seventy-five grand or so from Blue Cross?
Right, similar to Blue Cross, yep, yep, so we, you know, again, that one was a unique opportunity, cause they reached out to us in that case, but a lot of these other times, it's our community health specialists who are identifying or seeing grant, RFPs come out and then bringing them forward and saying, hey, this is something we, you know, we're needing to work on, can we apply for it, and, um, so yeah, I'll have to look a little bit deeper into that to figure out like where it's at in their funding source, as far as how they appropriate the funds and their budgets and where they're coming from, but, um, yeah, I can get back to you with more information on that.
Thank you. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Go ahead.
I have, just a quick question, are these grants, are they, does the county have to, um, is it a match or?
Not with these ones, no, yep, there's no match with these that I've seen, and I don't believe the early childhood health one has a match either, yeah.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next, Foley Community Expo.
Okay, so, um, I'll just give a, a brief introduction, so Benton County Public Health is continuing to partner with the school district in Foley Community Education this year to plan the Foley Community Connect Expo, and I will have our staff come up again and provide report on what's to come.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Foley Community Connect Expo, and we're going to extend an invitation for you all to attend, um, if you're interested.
Thank you.
So the Foley Community Connect Expo will take place, um, this is the second annual event on March twenty-second from nine AM to noon at the Foley High School gym. Um, and like Jaclyn said, our Foley Community Connect Expo Committee is, um, in collaboration with Foley Community Ed as well as Benton County Public Health Staff. So the purpose of the event is just to bring resources, um, and connections to the community directly at this event, so things like mental health resources, housing services, insurance information, activities for youth, um, senior, um, resources. Um, so really just a wide array of different resources and services, and we hope to offer something for all age groups. So some of the specific event offerings we will be having are car seat checks, um, and then there will be breakfast provided, uh, for all attendees. We'll also have kids' vision checks, uh, free kids tennis shoes ages two to eighteen, a variety of different sizes. Um, and then one of our health clinics here, Williams Integrity Care, will be providing blood pressure checks. There'll also be free meal kits provided from the Brainerd Lakes Outreach Program, um, that families can take home, and, um, I think one bag, don't quote me on it, but I think it's like twenty meals or so that come in one, one meal bag. Um, personal hygiene kits for individuals to take for free. And then, um, as Kayla mentioned, Children's Dental Services will also be up at the event providing walk-in appointments for, um, any children to come in and get an appointment or a cleaning, so. And then much more, and if you haven't seen our Hidden in Plain Sight exhibit, I would recommend coming and seeing that. Um, it's, uh, an exhibit set up like a teenager's bedroom with different items like vapes, um, and other um, sort of substances hidden throughout the bedroom to see what it would look like as a parent walking through, to see if they could identify some of those things, um, that are often hidden in plain sight.
Just as a quick note for Commissioner Johnson, what are you surfing for breakfast?
He did highlight that for me early.
Thanks a lot, Commissioner.
I think we're planning on hash browns, eggs, um, sausage. Pretty typical breakfast foods.
I think I can count you in.
Yeah, count me in, yeah.
Good question.
Such abuse, I'm feeling the pain, Monty.
We can let you continue now.
Go for vendors, there are sixty, um, vendors that we have set up that'll have tables there, so we have health plans that serve Benton County residents, we have mental health, um, resources and, um, different service providers that will be there, a variety of nonprofit organizations, um, so we had, I wanna say around thirty to forty last year vendors, so we've really increased from last year as we move, um, forward with the second annual event. The funding for this event to help pay for the shoes, the breakfast, uh, Children's Dental Services, that's been funded by local businesses, um, you can see on the flyer, the, um, funders are lo- uh, located on the bottom of the flyer. Um, other grants and then donated time and fun, funding as well. Other grants and then donated time and funding as well. And then for attendees, we had two hundred and nineteen attendees last year, and we're expecting around three hundred this year. We'll have them fill out a survey when they enter the event as well, just to kind of keep track of how many attendees, where they're coming from, and just some demographic information, too. So we just want to say thank you. Listed here are our public health staff that are on the committee to help in planning this event. And then if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us. Otherwise, we hope to see you there.
I was there last year for the first time event, and it was very well attended. A lot of people there. And I brought my wife there. Between me and my wife, I think we knew every vendor there. I thought I was only going to be there for an hour, but it was over two hours. But I did, I did like the room, though. That was really cool to see. Go ahead.
Awesome, yeah, I want to, I want to see that, too. Tell me a little bit about the sponsors, so the difference between gold, silver, bronze, and then a lot of challenges getting sponsors, or are people really stepping up?
We had a lot of the same sponsors as last year sponsored again this year, and then we continued to reach out to a variety of other partners, too, just seeing if we could even gain more sponsorship. A lot of them, you know, local. A lot of our health plans also contributed to this event, too, that you can see listed below. And then the difference between the sponsors on the bottom are just the funding amount. So correct me if I'm wrong, was it a hundred? I think it's a hundred twenty-five, two fifty, and five hundred for different sponsorship levels, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for putting this up, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, honestly, the, how you break up the one twenty-five, you know, the smaller amounts, it's able to get a lot of businesses involved. And that one twenty-five, you partner it with, you know, ten others, and you got a thou, you know, over a thousand bucks, so. Great job.
Commissioner Poppy, you had a question?
Nope.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, this is just informational, I believe?
Yeah.
Great, I'll be there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you for your time.
For everything you do. Okay, next. Approve acceptance of the Minnesota Public Health State Infrastructure Funding.
All right.
That was a handout given to us.
Yes, that was the handout. And I'm pretty sure we saved the best for last. I'm also pretty certain that our staff heard me yell woo-hoo this morning, like three floors up. I just got an email, and on the backside of the agenda item is a copy of the email I received this morning at eight forty-one from the Minnesota Department of Health. If you recall, back on October fifteenth of twenty-four, our Community Health Board approved public health staff applying for state infrastructure funding on behalf of our Central Minnesota Alliance Group. I'm happy to report that we were selected. They approved our grant application and awarded us an amount of eight hundred thousand dollars to use over the next two years, four hundred thousand dollars per year, which is pretty phenomenal. Our regional group is incredibly excited about this. As you know, our Local Public Health Act requires that we complete by statute a community health assessment and a community health improvement plan. Benton County does that as a regional collaboration. We've been doing it that way now for our previous cycles of our health improvement plan and plan to continue to work together on that. And so this funding is going to help support that community health assessment and community health improvement planning process. So really, all I'm looking for this morning is just an initial acceptance, so I can respond back to the state and confirm that we would accept to move forward. And then the state would remit a contract, and then I'd be back to board with the contract itself, and then approval of the proposed staffing plan. Back in October, I had mentioned that the main goal of this would be to support a regional data analyst and a regional program manager. So this would be very similar to our First Steps Collaborative. We would plan to structure it in much of the same way, where that regional program manager would support the process of our community health assessment and our community health program or planning. And then the data analyst would support the Central Minnesota Alliance data piece of it, which is a massive undertaking. Our community health assessment and plan has a lot of data sources, a lot of review, a lot of compiling, a lot of data display, a lot of aggregate data, so very specific to those public health mechanisms. And so the plan would be to fully fund those two positions out of these grant funds to support our work and build capacity around this space. And then, you know, like I said, when I come back after we'd have a chance to talk with the CMA, we would talk about more of that staffing plan and then a sustainability plan when I come back to ask for approval of the contract. So initially today would just be to get approval to respond back to the state that we would be looking to ahead. And then, like I said, I'd be back with that contract, so.
Questions?
So moved, Mr. Chair. Second.
We got a motion and a second for the acceptance of this. Any other questions?
Great job.
Yep, that's nice news.
Yeah, really exciting. And the only thing I haven't mentioned is we would have the opportunity to reapply for an additional two years, so. Then after that, like I said, we'd come back with a plan. So really exciting. And like I said, I'm sure everyone jumped. They're not here, but everyone jumped when I yelled this morning.
It is. It's widely needed. This will be great, though.
Yes, very exciting.
Any other questions? If not, I'll call, call it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you, Jaclyn.
Anything else, Jaclyn, in front of us?
No, nothing else in front of you for today.
Question. Commissioner Kapinski?
Just more of a statement, and I didn't, I was thinking about postponing this because of the good news. But obviously, we know the bad news coming from the state government. And I think Thursday could be a horrible day for finding out what the forecast looks like. With that said, we just got to, we got to stay, we got to keep our eye on the ball because I got a feeling there's going to be a lot of things in human services, you know, health department, ever. All of these programs could end up taking a big cut in, in aid. So just, we appreciate everything you guys do, and this isn't on you guys. It says way higher than any of us.
I'd like to, yeah, if I can comment back, so appreciate the comment, Commissioner Kapinski, because this is something that our staff have been thinking about, too. So I appreciate the acknowledgement and recognition of that.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Pop?
So when we were at the Ledge Conference and the president of AMC spoke, I didn't realize that there's only eighteen states in the United States that do human services and public health on a county level. The others do it through a state organization.
Correct, yeah.
President Slavic brought that out, I think, because he was quite concerned about where we're going and what we're doing. And that just seems to, yeah, maybe counties, small counties will get lost in the process. You know, the big counties, the metro counties will take advantage of that. I don't know.
It is nice to have some control.
Yeah.
It is. And we've learned that at the Nacho Conference, too, though, you know, that it's all state-driven, all the other...
Yeah, we are fortunate in the way that Minnesota conducts their public health. It is very different than a lot of the states in the, in the way that they have that autonomy at the local level, where really they say, you know, here's what's expected of our health departments. But how you do that at a local level, you have a lot of autonomy in determining, within reason, right? I mean, our grant funding sources oftentimes dictate what we can work on. But within reason, we're able to say how we get from point A to point B is really appropriated to what fits our community best. And so that's really helpful in, in the way that our grants come through. We call them grants, but really it's more like pass-through funding through the state. So it's appropriated to the state, and then the state decides on that funding formula and sends it out to the counties. So that is a little different than some of those other states that have that state-funded program. But in Minnesota, it's more of a local and state partnership, where the state takes on some of the things that we don't do here at the local level, like our environmental health. We don't have a robust environmental health staffing capacity, so a lot of the state covers that for us and vice versa. So we kind of work in partnership and have a lot of technical assistance and a lot of regional state coordinators that support our staff throughout the work. So it works really well, you know, when we have that consistency. And then across counties, it's really helpful to have that local state partnership, too, because then we all get the same messaging from the state at times. And then we, we work together with those other counties on health initiatives with a shared goal, so.
It does work really well, though, in Minnesota, because the other states don't, don't have that colla, collaboration, though, either.
Yeah, and like our SHAC, so the State Community Health Services Advisory Committee that Commissioner Heinon is on, that committee, it's kind of unique in Minnesota as well, because there are county commissioners from every single county across the state of Minnesota that make up that advisory committee to the Minnesota Department of Health Commissioner. And so when there's new policies or statute review, it's a team of the county commissioners plus the public health director from all counties across our state of Minnesota that meet and compile recommendations to give to the commissioner of the state of, for the state of Minnesota Department of Health. And so that's kind of unique in Minnesota as well, is that the fact that all those people are in the same room when it comes time to reviewing a lot of those policies or funding formulas. There's a lot of group decision-making in that process, too, which is helpful, so.
We actually have a good say in it, too, though. I mean, they take our recommendations. Anything else? Thank you, Jaclyn.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for taking me.
We're adjourned at nine fifty-five, and I'll turn it back over to the board chair.
Well, we will now recess the county board meeting and turn it to ditch authority.
All right, call our ditch authority meeting to order at nine fifty-five. We've gone on a roll call. Any changes to the agenda, Chris? No changes? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. And a second, motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Move on to consent agenda. One item approver. Men the ditch authority minutes from February fourth of this year.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion and a second to approve those minutes. Any discussion in regards to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it's carried. Chris, accept a petition for abandonment of CD four.
All right, I think Christine, she did receive a petition for CD four.
Okay.
Great.
Go ahead, Christine.
So just to give you a little recap, on ditch four, December sixth, Mike and Tim Rakuski contacted my office via email asking how to abandon ditch four. They were then provided the petition template that is in the Minnesota Public Ditch Drainage Manual. On December twelfth, they submitted the petition. It was determined at that time that the petition was invalid due to there being a current assessment on the ditch. The Rakuskis then collected the remaining assessments from neighbors and paid off the current assessment on county ditch four. On January seventeenth, they submitted another petition to abandon, and it was determined then that the petition was invalid due to all the property owners on the benefited parcels listed not signing the petition. On February twenty-fourth, they submitted another petition, which is what is presented today. And the current petition has four hundred and forty-six point three-three acres of the six hundred and ninety-three point eight-one acres, which would be sixty-four percent of the benefited landowners signing.
Okay, so a couple of questions, and I don't know if this is for Christine or Michelle, but who, whose task was validating the petition?
So both Christine and I did work on making sure that we had enough acres, as well as property owners, and going back through those records to make sure that all of the relevant property owners had signed. So all the spouses, all the trustees, all that stuff.
So at this point, this is a valid petition for abandonment?
It appears so.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So then, next step, we set a public hearing? Okay?
I was going to propose the second meeting in April. I believe it's the fifteenth.
That's our, so our board meeting day?
Yeah.
Is there anything else on the agenda that you know of, Chris? For a ditch authority that day?
At this time, I do not know if there's anything else, yeah.
Okay. Ditch authority, April fifteenth, public hearing for abandonment of CD four. And it's been stated we have a valid petition, so. Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move that motion.
I'll second it. Motion and a second to approve April fifteenth ditch authority meeting. We probably need to set a time.
Time, yeah.
On nine o'clock, because we don't know when it's going to happen, I suppose. I, I mean, if we can do ten, but we may end up waiting if we're at a short meeting. So I think we have to list nine. That's my opinion. You okay with that on your, Jared, you okay with that? So April fifteenth, nine AM for ditch authority, to have a public hearing for the abandonment of CD four. Any other discussion? Anything from staff? Michelle or Chris, Christine, anything else?
No, we just, we'll have to send out a notice to all benefited landowners in CD fours.
Okay.
I believe a publication in the official newspaper is required as well.
Correct.
Yep, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried. We'll have that public hearing on April fifteenth. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Christine and Chris. Anything else for ditch authority? Just a reminder, tonight we have a six PM public hearing for CD nine. All right, we are adjourned on ditch authority at nine fifty-nine.
Yes.
Quickest ditch authority meeting you're ever going to see. I'll turn it back to the board chair.
We'll reconvene the county board meeting, and we'll go to set committee of the holes.
None of them. Bush, no approve.
Don't have to approve, we don't have none.
I tell you. All right, Chris, we'd like to request of you a committee of the hole on various highway topics. Chris, did you have a suggested timeframe for this? What's your, what?
It'd still be in, we're in March, right?
Yes, sir, yep.
Uh, so we have another regular scheduled board meeting on the eighteenth. I don't know if you want to do it that day or the nineteenth, the Wednesday?
I'm on vacation that week, so.
I'm, you're not, you're going to hear the wrath right now. We've started, and you're just up here, but we started scheduling things on the Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays again. I'm, for now on, I'm out. I'm out on those days.
Sure.
So.
And I know Fridays, I can't make it either.
Unless we absolutely have to on a, on a few things. But we've got, we've got committee assignments that spread out, and we still got to do our, our daily job, too. Some of us aren't...
What's your timeline, Chris? I mean, like, the twenty-fourth, Monday, the twenty-fourth option, or? Not sure what your timeline is.
That's possibly, yeah, an option. Yeah, so the idea would be discussed, start talking about the five-year plan. You know, we've referenced a lot about Mayhew Lake Road. When outsiders look at it, we don't have that in our five-year CIP, so we need to seriously have some discussions about that. So that, that's my concern as far as timeline. There's not a set timeline. I just think it's better. But, yeah, we could look at Monday, the twenty-fourth, so.
How's that for everybody?
I wouldn't be able to be there.
You can?
Well, I don't know. My grandson's having surgery that day, so if that doesn't change, I would be in the cities.
Twenty-fifth? Or thirty-first? Dr. March.
Thirty-first in March would be a...
Thirty-first, I can't.
How long is this going to take, Chris?
As long as we keep that one road off of the twenty-five or whatever, fine.
No, they're going to be here. You could bet on it.
I mean, I, I don't know. Take a couple hours. I want to talk about the five-year plan in general, and then maybe some more specifics, about forming some partnerships and forming some agreements on Mayhew Lake Road project with our, our project partners.
How about the twenty-fifth?
That works for me.
I should be able to make that work.
Twenty-fifth, yeah, I can make that work.
Eight-thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah. Jared, that work for you?
Twenty-fifth at eight-thirty?
Okay. Got it.
We'll lock it in.
All right. And we should probably also add, if we may, Mr. Chair, the meetings that were discussed yesterday, open house meetings on the Government Center project.
Yep.
So if I may just, if I may cover these. April ninth, six to seven-thirty, Sauk Rapids Government Center Community Room. April sixteenth, six to seven-thirty here in the boardroom. I'll come back to the issue of the tours, Commissioner Johnson. April seventeenth, six to seven-thirty, Rice City Hall, Council Chambers. So I believe there was, there was a consensus to have tours at the same night as the public hearing on the CIP plan, which was May sixth at four. That, so I would suggest the tours be set as a committee of the whole. So that would be four PM, May sixth, for facility tours. The special board meeting on May sixth at six PM would not be a committee of the whole. That's just a simply special board meeting we post three days prior. Commissioner Johnson, I believe you suggested having tours also on the sixteenth.
My only thought was, we're, it's here and open, and why, why wouldn't we, I guess?
Yeah.
I agree.
So I, I don't want to create, I don't want to create confusion. So I, I think we should have a distinct posting for the open house at six PM and a separate posting on April sixteenth for facility tours from four to six.
Yeah, correct.
So there's no confusion, so people don't show up at four thinking it's the open house, so. So anyway, as I, we'll, as I may have mentioned, is we'll do at least one, maybe two advertisements in Benton County Sauk Rapids Herald on these dates. Web page, social media, however we can push it out, the, the word out about these, so.
And I did see Christine's follow-up, the flyer already was printed. And I think that's okay. I don't know that we want to change it at this point. It gave everybody the heads up that these meetings are coming.
Okay, so we'll let that one ride, yeah. Okay, so we'll let that one ride. Yeah, it's already printed, yeah.
And for Tim's information, those are going out in the tax.
I picked out a really pretty color. I spent a lot of time doing that.
I saved the county money by going with white paper.
Thank you.
You have, Tim, are you interested?
You got it. Mr. Chair, those are all the committees of the hole we have for you.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to set the committees of the hole. Any other discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you, are you putting this on the committees of the hole? In case there's more than two commissioners?
Oh, we should, yes.
Good point.
Good point, thank you.
Yes, can you, can you give us the, it's right there. Yep, I can.
March 22nd.
March 22nd, 9:00 AM to noon, Community Connect Expo, Foley High School Gymnasium. Thank you.
And Tim would like to.
All questions must be submitted in writing.
Okay, Tim, what?
I would like to go back. Now you have scheduled in March 22nd. Talk about various highway issues, correct, Chris?
Yep.
Mayhew Lake, you've got an approved school project that's going to put early childhood, sports facility in there.
Yep.
The questions are, okay, where's the funding? And it gets kicked up high in priority. Jared, you're the APO, you're an APO, you've got multiple partners.
Yep.
I mean, it kicks it up a little bit.
Absolutely, yeah. This, with what, you know, if you look at it a few ways, everything, all the referendums that passed in Sauk Rapids is not necessarily great for taxpayers, but it, it really is. I mean, they're getting value there. But it also puts priorities on this road, which are going to be heightened at the state and federal level, because of, it's already a horrible road when it comes to accidents. And, and now we're going to be probably close to almost doubling all that traffic through there. Once that park is built in the next two years, the, the Early Childhood Education Center, as well as the, the athletic complex out there, I, I mean, the, the traffic is going to be horrendous in that area.
And to your point, Tim, that was discussed down at the state for bonding requests. I mean, that was all put in and mentioned multiple times.
Kicking up to your delegation and say, look, you got to get back on track.
Yes.
We've talked an issue up a lot with Brady, you know, a lot. Very aware of our.
Commissioner, Commissioner Johnson and myself and the superintendent, Brad Bernstein, we were down there at the Capitol already. How we, how many people we meet with? 10, 12?
Multiple.
Give them on board.
They heard it again last week. And then we're getting emails from the congressionally-directed spending from, from Klowishar, Smith, Ammer, again. And we're going to be, we're, we're going to be working with the, the APO lobbyists out in the federal area, David Church, to get this back in their ears. Because we've applied. Now, this is the second time that we're, third time we're applying.
That'd be a third time for a.
For the Raze Grant. I, I, I truly believe that the stars are going to align either on a bonding bill or on the Raze Grant.
You better settle on the bond, on the Raze Grant, because I don't think.
We're going to need something for that first section, anyway, regardless.
Yeah.
The last, the most recent Mayhew Lake Plan is 2023. It's on the website, county website.
That's that corridor study that was completed in conjunction with the APO. And that's, that's what kind of set the vision of what this road should look like someday. And when we completed that study, that, those timelines were unknown. And just like you pointed out, that timeline is a little bit more set now, because it's been amped up. The voters are proving they wanted these changes with the school property.
I guess.
No, because once again, the plan kind of establishes what that road, even though it didn't have timeframes in it, now we've got to figure out a way to deliver what that plan said the vision was.
Thanks, Dan.
Great questions.
Yeah.
We like your questions, most of the time.
And even if we don't, that's okay.
Even if we don't, yeah, fine.
Anything else?
Motion to go into closed session.
No, we've got, you got to approve the account.
Yeah, we got to approve the account with the additions.
There was a motion.
There was a motion, and we got to add the 22nd.
Yep.
So moved. I, I, I amend my motion.
Okay.
I was the motion leader, it's fine.
Okay.
Motion's been made in second to approve the committee of the holes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
No.
Now we can.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session to, for department leader reviews.
Motion's been made, it's a second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to go into closed session.
And, Mr. Chair, I should note for the record that the purpose of today's closed session is to conduct evaluations of the county engineer, IT director, and land services director.
Thank you. And I think we're going to start with Chris, so we're going to get everything shut down.